Well, before we get started, let me welcome each one of you here today. Thank you so much for being with us. Our attendance continues to pick up and although we're right here at a Good Friday weekend, this is still good attendance for a holiday weekend. Let's start by saying our defining statement, and if you would stand for this. Kiwanis is a global organization of volunteers dedicated to improving the world. One child and one community at a time. Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our invocation today is by Ron Margot. Ron?
One minute, okay. Then I told me forty-five.
Sex.
It's really a great honor for me to say grace today because it's my first time talking in front of such a big audience. This month, I guess this month, we would have a different religion or a different type, aspect of religion, and I happen to be your Jewish one, so I thought I would throw something in about being people of the book. And so I'll talk a bit about literacy. But first, I want to say, we just did the mission statement, and we talked about one child and one community at a time. And there was a story which I thought really encapsulated this beautifully. I don't know if you've heard this, but it's the tale of the starfish. And there was a big storm, and the next morning, the beach was full of starfish. And there's one little girl, she was running up and down the beach, and she would take a starfish and run into the water and throw it, and then she'd come back to the beach and throw it into the water. And there's people watching, and an old man comes up and says to her, you know, it's nice what you're doing, but you're actually not going to make any difference to what's going on. Look, just stick around. And that, I think, is the essence of Kiwanis. She came back and picked up another one, threw it in the water, and said, I made a difference to that one. And that's when we talk about one kid at a time. We can make, we can't do everything, but we need to do one kid at a time. Anybody here from the U.S. Department of Education? I hope not. I Googled "U.S. literacy," and this is a challenge, I think, to Kiwanis Club. U.S. literacy, it said fifty-four percent of U.S. adults between the age of sixteen and seventy-four, that's nobody here, through about one hundred and thirty million people, read below the equivalent of a sixth grade level. You can Google that, "U.S. literacy." About twenty-five percent of high school graduates are functionally illiterate. So as I say grace now, my prayer is, Heavenly Father, thank you for the food and friendship we share. You have presented us with a daunting challenge, but it's also given us the solution. Please give us the determination and drive to help those around us to read and better their futures. Help us to continue to make a difference, one child and one community at a time. Amen.
Thank you, Ron. We appreciate that. You made it. As you see, we try to get someone from a different religion or a different point of view each week, so if you hear something that's a little different than your religion, kind of understand where we're coming from and what we're doing. Let's, let me first of all, welcome back Art Raymond, who's sitting over here. Art has not been with us for a few weeks. We're glad you're here. Let's give him a round of applause. Art, thank you so much. We're glad you're here today. Are there any membership welfare items that any of you have to share with the audience? Andy Wood's birthday. Happy birthday, Andy. Let me make a couple of announcements here that we have. Our board has agreed to sponsor the Kiwanis Club of Cary, and that is moving along. We've had several meetings by Zoom about that. And if you know anyone in the Cary area that would make a good Kiwanian, or someone you know that should be in Kiwanis, please pass that name along to us so we can work with that particular person. Also, check your emails each week to make sure of any updates that are coming from the club. We have news happening all the time. Serving at the Salvation Army is on the Fourth Friday, and our next opportunity is April the twenty-eighth. And Bob Goodell and Sandra worked last Friday, so if you would help on the Fourth Friday in the month that's coming up, please volunteer to do so. Our diaper drive, and Scott is not here today with the diaper drive, but let me tell you, as of today, we have three thousand dollars that has been donated to it. It is still not too late to donate. You can donate today, and there is a form on your table that you can pick up, and there's that barcode on it, or whatever, what do you call it?
QR code.
Thank you so much. You can tell how much I know about computers. Pick that up, take a picture of it, and just by your phone, send the information. Yes, ma'am?
Hey Buck, in addition, if you go onto our website, there is a little button down on the homepage about diaper drive, and if you click on that, it will take you to the same flyer, but it also takes you to a link to their Amazon wishlist page. And so you can order things that they specifically need, and it would be shipped to them directly.
Thank you so much. Any other announcements? Let me say, Andy, do you have anything on the golf tournament?
What I got to say before, volunteers, I think I reached out to the volunteers. I'm just saying that you know the volunteer last year, the volunteer that had it last year of the year before. I just, for example, we don't have it for, it's a handful of people that do various things. I won't put you down. My volunteer, we have a lot of volunteers too, for very.
Please participate. That'll be a great event, and it's one of our major fundraisers each year, so be sure to be at that. Alice, do you have any updates on Charter Night?
Your sign-up sheets on the table. I hope that you're all planning on attending. It should just be a lovely evening. I do have a question. I wasn't here last week, and we don't know what happened to the sign-up sheets that were on the table. Does anybody here know if they were picked up and put someplace? Okay, we'll figure out where they are. Thanks.
I think our president took them, took them with her. I remember helping to put them together last week. Okay. How about Matt Jenkins? Do you have anything about the Miracle League opportunity? Is Mac here? Well, the Miracle League opportunity, where we can work for the Miracle League, takes place on May the thirteenth, so keep that date in mind. Are there any other announcements to be made? I believe we have a third-time visitor. Is that correct?
Hey, I got you right here.
There he is.
Sorry, I'll introduce you, my fellow Kiwanians. I got my good friend Hunter visiting us with us today again, third time, and we're going to do an application. And so everybody have a chance to talk to him today before we leave, all right?
Just give him a round of applause. Thank you so much for being with us, and we look forward to you being one of our union members. Let me tell you, this has been a heck of a week as far as programs go. This has just been a heck of a week altogether. I came in today and picked up a pen, and look what I did the very first thing. But it started out early Monday morning with the person that I had arranged to be here today saying, I'm calling you to let you know I can't make it on Friday. I said, wow, I haven't been stuck with that yet, but I tell you, I have a couple of good people in mind. And one of them that we were going to use a little later in the year, that he agreed to come speak with us today, is one of our own members, Patrick Buffkin. Patrick moved to Raleigh twenty years ago when he was attending NC State. He's never looked back. He established a career here as a renewable energy and utility lawyer. He married the love of his life, Rachel, and he served as a, served the community as HOA president, a member of the City Parks Board, the Greenway Advisory Board, and as the District A member of the City Council. His work on City Council focused on issues like housing, traffic and transportation, investment in parks and infrastructure, and making government work better for all of us. Patrick was born in Kernersville, near Winston-Salem. He earned his BA at North Carolina State and his JD at North Carolina Central. He got his training and his mentorship from somebody we all know, Zeb Alley. I tell you, you couldn't find anybody any better than that to be your mentor. He's worked for Bailey and Dixon and as a staff attorney for the state of North Carolina. He's a member of the Raleigh Kiwanis Club. We're glad to have him and to talk today on his thoughts about the City Council, an outgoing member of City Council, Patrick Buffkin. Thank you.
Buck, and thank you, fellow Kiwanians. I am going to share some reflections on my time on City Council, a few thoughts on Raleigh's future, but before I do that, I have one last piece of official business. During the COVID pandemic, I was not able to deliver this in person, but I've kept it safe in my files. I have here a proclamation by the mayor of the city of Raleigh declaring April 2020 as Kiwanis Club of Raleigh Centennial Anniversary Month in honor of the work that this club does, and particularly the four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars that we raised for the construction of the Sassifras All Children's Playground and the renovations at Kiwanis Park. So I will leave this with our vice president for the club's files. And by the way, that project is how I got into this club. Nick Fountain led the effort for the club, and we got to know each other, and he invited me to come, and it's been absolutely one of the best things that ever happened to me. Got a lot of affection for this club, the members, and the work that we do. So with that business out of the way, a few reflections on my time at the City Council table, a few thoughts on Raleigh's future, and before I really get into it, I would, I would want to tell you all that this group of folks that you see in this picture here were some of the very best our city had. We fussed and fought with each other, that's natural. We made some mistakes, and that is prone to happen. But I tell you, I've been following city politics for fifteen, twenty years pretty closely, and I cannot remember as a group, a group of elected officials that was more ready, more energetic, more inspired, and more willing to do the work that needed to be done at City Council, and it was an honor to be a part of them. I want to start at the end, why I didn't run for reelection. This is me holding our baby boy early on the morning of October first. He arrived on September thirtieth in the midst of a hurricane, and the first six weeks of his life were the last, would have been the last six weeks of the campaign. And I think I could have won that race, and I, but, but in retrospect, it was a very good decision, a decision I made with my wife, who I gave an absolute veto over this whole political thing. And I told her if she wanted to stop, we would stop, no questions asked. And she, she saw clearly it was not going to be workable. And I argued with her a little bit. I told her I thought I could win, and she told me that had nothing to do with it. And she was right, of course. The night that the new council met for the first time, I was standing in the kitchen, and I watched my baby boy roll over, and I would have been down at City Hall. I would have missed that. I would have been away a lot for the first six weeks of his life. And so it was a good decision, it was a tough decision, but I'm glad that I made the decision I did. You know, if I had to sum it up in a few words, I would say that my time on City Council was more than we bargained for. There was, of course, the extension of our term. I got elected to a two-year term because of delays in the U.S. Census results. We asked the legislature, and the legislature granted our request that we be, we be allowed an additional year in office. So I ended up serving three years on City Council, one more than I thought I would. And of course, 2019 was an election year, which meant most of that year was dedicated to running for office. I was also on the Parks Board at that time, and it takes a lot of time out of your life, and it takes a toll professionally and personally. Criticism is natural, and I don't take umbrage at being criticized, but the environment that the City Council is operating in has gotten very caustic, and I've been called racist, corrupt, and been criticized in many, many ways. I've had four bar complaints filed against me. They were dismissed summarily, but all of it takes its toll. Then, of course, there was the COVID pandemic, which, when we got elected in October 2019, nobody had any conception of that happening. And it was presenting various challenges that really couldn't be understated, and I'm not going to go too much into it. Not a lot of pleasant memories for any of us about that whole time. And, and then, as I said earlier, one, one of the things that I did not expect was this, this decline in civility and decorum in our city. And if you have not sat through a City Council public comment session, they hold two a month, but the one you need to go to is on the first Tuesday of the month in the evening. You will see firsthand what I'm talking about. It's a really challenging time. We're having a hard time getting along with each other. There's lots of things to disagree about, and we're having a real hard time disagreeing in a civil way, and that's something I'll talk a little bit more about, too. You know, that said, and I wouldn't want it to be lost in, in this whole talk, that Raleigh's future is just blindingly bright. It's an incredible place to be. The fundamentals are so strong, I'm, I'm not sure any group of elected officials could screw it up. Really, and some of them will try, but it, our finances are strong. We got triple-A credit ratings from all the bond agencies. We're very conservative with our money, and we have a professional incompetent city staff under the council manager form of government. Our city manager is the CEO of city government. The council and the mayor sit as something of a board of directors, but the city manager and the staff run the city day-to-day, and they do a darn fine job. They are wonderful people, and they're incredibly dedicated to this community. Of course, we're experiencing roaring growth in this time, and growth in a city can cover up a lot of problems. It fixes a lot of things. And along with that growth, we're, we're experiencing increasing prosperity. Things are just really pretty good in Raleigh, and I see no stop to that, no slowing down of that. It's just a really wonderful place to be. Five major themes really come out in my mind when I think about my time on City Council. Some of these are obvious. Raleigh's in transition, and the former city manager, Ruffin Hall, put it best, "We are leaving the time when Raleigh was a big, small town, and we're becoming a small, big city." We're somewhere around twenty-eight or thirty, largest city in the country. We are the second-largest city and the ninth-largest state in the country. And that's, there's some good things about that, and there's some challenges that come along with that, but that is a reality that is ever-present in the work of the City Council. A second theme, local government is being asked to solve more and different problems today than, than ever before, but the tools that are available for the governing body really haven't changed in about seventy years. We are what we call a Dillon's Rule state. Municipalities, cities, towns, villages, they're all basically regulated the same, and they have no powers which are not specifically granted by the General Assembly, which is very different than cities in other states that have what they call a home-rule regime, where they can do anything that the legislature says they cannot do. And this really comes out in a fast-growing big city like Raleigh, where you have a lot of hamstrings on you as a governing body. There's just a lot of things you can't do, yet we are the level of government closest to the people, and the people are demanding that we solve these problems that we simply are just not authorized to solve. There is an ever-present tension at the governing table between what the city needs and what people want, and mostly that's around growth and development. And I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about that later, but the long and short of it is the people demand that their elected officials be responsive to their problems. However, a responsible governing elected official might look to solve problems in a way that is more forward-looking than responding to immediate needs, and it is a constant tension inside city government. Our local politics is becoming nationalized. We saw that certainly during the riots of 2020, and I'll talk a little bit more about that, but there's many other ways that that is showing up. Another one of them is we're now holding elections in even number of years, which is a highly partisan environment. People are getting elected because of their allegiance and support from the local Democratic Party, not necessarily because of their interest or experience or preparation for governing a city. And lastly, the downfall of the local press has created a void that has been filled with misinformation, bad information, and outright lies. And I think when I got involved in politics, the News Observer had three or four beat reporters on the local beat. There was, there was a City Council reporter, there was a county commission reporter, there was a school board reporter, and then there was a reporter that covered all the municipalities other than Raleigh, Wake Forest, Zebulon, Knightdale, Apex, et cetera. There is now one, sometimes one and a half. And so ninety-five percent of what happens at the City Council table does not get reported on. That means some important things just never reach the minds of the voters. And in that void, particularly through social media, people have put out bad information, misinformation, and as I said, just, just plain lies. I won't dwell on that, but it is a real dynamic in terms of governing the city. Going back to 2019, seems like a long, long time ago now. Our, our city was really stagnating. The City Council was fussing and fighting with each other. They couldn't get anything done. Here's some of the things the News Observer editorial board had to say about it, and they got it right, and, you know, particularly when they endorsed me, of course. But, but it was true. The City Council was really mired in spats and personal conflicts. They couldn't govern, and, you know, it was a proud moment that the News Observer endorsed me in this quote, really, really spoke to my approach to governing and why I wanted to be on City Council was to try to help solve problems, be respectful, and get back to talking to each other again, because that's really the only way out of these difficult challenges that we're facing. So in 2020, city, new City Council comes in, and we were all, all charged up, ready to go, in some ways suffering from the ailment that befalls all politicians that win elections. You know, when you win, everything you did was right, everything you said resonated with the people. So, you know, we came in ready to get to work, and three months later, the entire city, the entire state, the whole country and the world shut down for COVID. We think it was the first time we had to close the city offices to the public since a really bad ice storm sometime in the early nineteen hundreds. It really just presented new, unique challenges that, that we weren't prepared for, and, and of course, couldn't see coming. George Floyd was murdered by a police officer in Minneapolis, and that sparked riots in our downtown. Again, we, our Raleigh police had not deployed tear gas since the Wolf Pack won the national championship in 1983. So, you know, again, something we did not see coming, something we were not necessarily prepared to deal with. And this kind of disruption set us off course and really delayed a lot of good efforts and projects. It caused a lot of consternation and hurt feelings inside the council. Amid that, a council member resigned among sexual misconduct allegations, sexual assault allegations. As I say, the council broke up, we came back together. We did some really important work, including passing a housing bond, eighty-million-dollar housing bond, over seventy percent of the voters voted for that. It was the biggest one the city had ever done, and we are now in year two of five or so that, that we're deploying that, that the city's deploying that money for the benefit of people who are struggling to find a place to live. Along the way, a narrative began to take hold, and these chickens came home to roost this past November, and it was basically that the council couldn't say no to developers. And it was partly because our mayor was working for a developer. It was partly because we couldn't. We were having a hard time figuring out how to say no. But it also was a practical recognition that we just need more housing. The city cannot buy, build enough housing to satisfy the market, and simple supply and demand tells you when there's not enough housing, and there's more people that want to buy or rent houses than there are houses available, prices are going to go up. So, you know, a part of it definitely was a practical recognition that we had, we had limited choice in not approving developments, because part of choosing not to approve a development was choosing to continue the same kind of dynamic that got us into a housing crisis. But the political side of it was that that narrative took a hold, and as I say, and we'll talk a little bit more about the election, but it, it hurt some incumbent members of the council, there's no doubt. 2021 was a year of impossible decisions. You may remember as the holiday season and the cold weather, we all started going back indoors, COVID was on the rise again. We were doing some really popular unthing, things like shutting down businesses, restaurants and bars, requiring people to wear masks, doing curfews. You know, well, I'll skip to the bottom bullet. Yeah, an amazing accomplishment. We managed to really anger just about everyone, and please, almost no one. It was an incredible feat, and a lot of it, we didn't feel like we had any choice about. One of those was asking the legislature to give us more time in office, which by its nature appeared to be a very selfish thing to do. We made the mistake of taking that issue up in closed session and not being transparent about it. That was our own mistake. But there again, we felt like we had no choice. We had to redraw districts. If we didn't, we could be subject to legal action that the election was invalid on one person, one vote principles, because our population had not been rebalanced. It wasn't our fault that the Trump administration had worked so hard not to count black people and Hispanic people, but the result of it was we didn't have the results, we couldn't draw the districts, so we needed more time. Growth and development issues continued to deepen divisions in the city. We saw the emergence of a quote-unquote "professional anti-growth activism." These people aren't actually professionals in the sense that they don't get paid, but it's a curious thing to see. There, there are people in our city who, if you ask them, what are you going to do next week? They'd say, well, I'm going to this public meeting, I'm going to the City Council meeting to fight this project, I'm going to meet with some neighbors to try to stop this other project. It's what gives meaning to their life, and it's, it's the dernest thing I've ever seen. There are folks who have literally spent ten, fifteen years of their lives trying to stop growth and change in this city. And they really got their act together in 2021 and 2022. They partnered with various interest groups, the local Democratic Party, and they, I, I give them credit, they did a heck of a job organizing against the incumbent council. Part of that was they deployed misinformation. The level of vitriol was just embarrassing. The City Council Public Comment Forums that I mentioned earlier became a, a forum for this activism and organizing. And again, the incredible accomplishment of angering everyone and pleasing virtually no one. It was, it was a very difficult year. And in 2022, a reckoning came. I decided to run for the Senate primary. There was a new open seat in North Raleigh. It covered all my council district plus a little more turf. It seemed like the golden opportunity to move up to the state level and continue working for this community and have a larger impact, and got beat two to one, which is by any accounts a butt-whipping. You know, I may have been a canary in the coal mine, as some has suggested. There may have just been a mismatch between my governing style, which was really focused on delivering results, versus a job that really isn't about results, it's about... on delivering results versus a job that really isn't about results, it's about messaging and raising money and fighting a fight. It's particularly for Democrats who are in minority and will be for the foreseeable future. The job of a state, a Democratic state senator is definitely not to deliver results. Now, a year later, I think the best question is who cares? You know, it doesn't matter, losing isn't fun, it hurt, but I've gotten over it and I moved on to other things. Fast forward to November, the city voters delivered a rebuke to the, to the mayor and the city council in a big way. I have no doubts that if the mayor had been in a head-to-head race, she would not be mayor today. She won reelection under a plurality vote, but did not get 50%. A couple, one incumbent lost, another incumbent won with less than 50% of the vote. It was clear the city was not happy with us, justified or not. You know, one of the interesting things about this is the voters don't owe you an explanation. They make their decisions and they do it for good reasons, bad reasons, no reasons, but they, they don't have to justify or explain themselves. You know, all that aside, you know, there's some good news because what really mattered was passing a $270 million parks bond, by far the biggest the city has ever done. And it will be a wonderful thing for our city parks and greenways for many years to come. And what really matters is my family and my personal well-being, and that certainly played a part into deciding not to run for reelection. There were some highlights. It was, it was certainly not all bad. There was a lot of good things that happened. We did a lot of good work. My personal interest, and again, how I got into this was through our city parks board. The parks bond approval was a major accomplishment. The council has in 2020 increased taxes by one penny and dedicated that funding for parks maintenance. That's a really important thing to have available. We promoted a fellow named Stephen Bentley to be the director of the parks system, longtime city parks employee, personal friend, and he came up through the construction side of the department, and he's just absolutely the right man for the right time at the right job. And so those were some major successes for the city parks. Hiring a new manager is a big deal, and our current city manager is an incredibly talented woman. She happens to be the first woman to hold the job and the first African-American person to hold the job, something I'm very proud of. And she will continue that tradition of public service inside our city staff regardless of who the governing board is. And then there were some little things, and I say little things, in this, in the spirit of the starfish story. This little girl here has autism disorder, and she gets very nervous when she, when she swings on swings, breaks down crying, and her parents figured out that it was the open air above the swing that made her so very nervous, so they built her this beautiful playset. And if you Google enough, you can see a picture of me sliding down that slide too. It's a beautiful playset, there's a swing underneath the clubhouse, and that was how she, this little girl could enjoy swinging on a swing for the first time. The problem was her parents built the swing set a little bit too close to the lot line, and her neighbors complained about it. The city staff was compelled to issue a notice of violation of the city setback regulations. And she got in touch with me and through working with the other members of council, we've repealed that setback regulation, and that swing set is where it was to this very day. Thank you. And they have become good friends. They come over to the house and visit, we go to their house. It's been a wonderful thing. You know, all the little things matter a lot to somebody. New stop signs, lower speed limits, fixing potholes, you know, that's the, the bread and butter of a district council member, and they, they are little things, they don't make the newspaper, nobody knows about them, but they matter a lot to somebody. And, you know, the biggest highlight of it all, and I got into this with the mentality that I was gonna, if I could get 50% of the district to vote for me, and they did, I was, I was going to do this my way, ethical, with good judgment, with a moderate approach, and I got to do that. And, you know, you, you, all the politics and the issues aside, an elected official still has to go to sleep at night, and I sleep well knowing I did it my way, which I think was the right way. Probably a lot of people disagree with that, but that's all right. Thank you. So a few thoughts on Raleigh's future. You know, again, I've said it two or three times already, but the best news I can share is the professionalism, the diligence and the competence, the commitment of our city staff to this community is second to none, and they're the folks that run the city day to day. We're, we're in good hands. Again, the fundamentals with all the growth and the strong financial footing the city's on are so strong, it, it almost can't go wrong. No doubt, there will be some mistakes made, but we're still going to end up in a very good place. The thing I'm concerned about most is partisanship. With our city council elections in the even number of years, I believe that a lot of people go to the polls and vote for people they have no idea who they are, and they have no idea what their views and stances on city government issues are. They are winning elections because of their ties to the local Democratic Party mostly, and I say the Democrats, not to single them out, but the reality is we're a very democratic city. So that is something that I worry about a lot, and I think the city deserves true nonpartisan elections. Another thing that has happened in putting these elections in November is there are no opportunity for a runoff, and you've got today, half the city council was not elected by 50% of the vote. I think that's a problem, and I think the general assembly should fix it. I, I really want to see our city go back to odd number year elections with a runoff so that people come in either having won 50% of the vote, or having won a runoff, or, or not having had to have a runoff. I think it gives legitimacy to the governing board, and putting those elections in the odd number year will take it out of that partisan environment. Two key things the city council should do, we, we are a little bit behind, we're more than a little bit behind on transportation funding. We need a transportation bond. I hope they will make it a big one, and I hope the voters will approve it. A second thing that I hope the city council will do is to build this new city civic center. If you've been in our city municipal building, you can see the building just, one, it does not represent our city well, it's an old tired building. Secondly, it's outdated. We have, in the last year, we put in security for the first time, so you've got to go through metal detectors and have your bags searched as, as happens at the general assembly and so many other places, but it's awkwardly done. The building was not planned for that kind of space. The IT and video AV technology is sort of duct taped around, there's no conduits built into the walls for that kind of thing because it was built in a time when nobody could envision why on earth anyone would want to watch a live city council meeting over the internet from their home. So the city building needs to be rebuilt, we've got plans to do that. It's become a little bit of a political football in the sense that there are so many needs in the community, why would the city look out for its own needs first? I think that's a wrong view to take, and I would really like to see the city have a nice new modern building that speaks to the spirit of our community and where we're headed. But nonetheless, I'm incredibly proud of Raleigh and all the work that we're doing. It embodies our state toast, a place where the weak grow strong and the strong grow great. And I think I am the type of person who has had that experience, thinking about how much a person grows and changes from 18 to almost 40, that's the time I've lived here. This place has been tremendous for me. My time at NC State, my work around state government, I shook hands with every governor since Mike Easley. I've known lots of powerful people, I've had opportunities to talk with them and influence their work, even, even the chairman of the industrial commission had me in his office one time when I was looking a job. It's been, it's been an incredible, incredible experience, and I think this is the kind of place where folks like me, where I moved from small town, no political connections, my parents' first political contributions were to my own campaign, you know, and, you know, this getting elected city council was a tremendous accomplishment, and that's not lost on me. And just wouldn't, wouldn't have had these opportunities if Raleigh wasn't Raleigh. And then I'll close, and I hope we have a little time for questions. I have some personal news. I have accepted a job with the Pender County Government, and Rachel and I are packing up the family, and we are moving to Surf City, North Carolina, and I will transfer my membership to the Quanis Club of Burgaw, but I'll be back to visit. I leave with a lot of fondness, of course, for this club and the city, but it's time for a new adventure, and I wouldn't have had the chance to have it without the experience I had in Raleigh, so I wish you all good luck. But like I said, I will be back, and just a phone call away, come visit us at the beach.
So Patrick, that business about changing the term and the, and going, and elections becoming partisan, a couple of questions. You know, some folks, when I've talked like we need to get back to the, to the odd year election, and folks will say to me, well, you're the same guy that talks about how we need bigger turnout, and you got a lot more turnout when you go with the elections when the governor and the president or somebody's going to be on the ballot. So, but, and that's part of, so I wonder about that and what your thoughts are. And secondly, what about the independents? And one of the problems with partisan is that you got a problem if you're independent. And so, yeah, your thoughts on both those things and how, how we sort of straighten out what we've managed to back into?
Yeah, the second one first. Unaffiliated voters are now the largest group of party registration in our county, and these are the people who are most disenfranchised by partisan election environment. Now, you are absolutely correct, and it was a part of our thinking when we asked the general assembly to move the election to the even year, that we'd get a larger turnout. And of course we did. However, it's clear, given the results, at least it's clear to me, that while more people turned out in an even year than in an odd year, the percentage of them who knew and understood and were motivated to vote in city elections because of city issues was much smaller in the even number year. In the odd number year, fewer people come out, but they are focused on local issues. They're informed, they know who the candidates are, and the result, I think, is going to be much better for the community to have them in odd number years because of that dynamic. Alice?
So I don't have a question, it's more of a testimonial. I'm an avid gardener, and I knew that when the lime green buckets came out, that I was in serious trouble because during gardening season, it was not unusual for me to have 10 large garbage cans at my curb. Patrick was, is, was not my council member, but he was the one that I knew, and Patrick went way out of his way to try to get me a second lime green bucket. It didn't work, but he made multiple, he, he made multiple calls, and I could not have asked for more attention or more service. I will end this by saying I got my revenge by, my lime green bucket is, you know, I get about a fourth of the way, and then it is jammed down tight, then another fourth of the way, and it's jammed down. And so I keep thinking I'm going to be out there when they're emptying it to see just how difficult it is to get the mass that I have managed to get into one green bucket. And, you know, I still, I still think that was a terrible decision, but Patrick went out of his way, and Patrick, you're going to be sorely missed.
Well, thank you for that, Alice. You know, we, we couldn't have time to talk about everything, but one of the interesting dynamics of where I was on city council, they represented North Raleigh, a very suburban part of the city for the most part. Most of the council was really focused on downtown issues, and I think there were probably members of the council, folks that lived in condos downtown, who just have no appreciation of how valued yard waste service is, particularly our loose leaf pickups that happen. It's just a different way of life. And now this, the, the green yard waste thing is a lot more efficient, but I did, I tried my best to get some flexibility, and if you haven't got that second cart, I will, I have not given up yet. I'll still make some calls for you, Alice. There you go.
Patrick, one of my neighbors is one of those professional anti-development people, so you have my deepest sympathy for that. It's just fascinating for me to watch him operate. I just didn't know he had it in him. But I also want to tell you that one of my secret guilty pleasures is listening to my wife complain about the traffic calming measures that have been installed on Hardamont Road and other places. Do those things work?
They do. So traffic calming takes different forms sometimes. The, the ones that people seem to get most bothered about are the humps, the big, you know, they're sort of longer, longer flattened speed bumps. They do force people to slow down. The more expensive and more maybe inconvenient ones are the ones that have curb bump outs that force you to, rather than navigate in a straight line, to, to slow down and curve your, your travel. All the engineers tell me they do work, they slow traffic down, they also discourage cut through traffic. So they do work, they do help neighborhoods make it safer for kids to play and people to walk and dogs and all that kind of stuff, but there, there are certainly people that do not like them. Jim?
Patrick, one of, to me, the biggest problems that Raleigh faces on elections is the entire council is up at the same time. And depending on the wind of that year, you could have an entire council and mayor who have no experience in running a city and being involved. It's being done on emotions. And so I know there's been a lot of discussions about four-year terms, alternating terms in that, and if you can give us an update of where that is?
The short answer is stalled. You know, I think, I completely agree with you, Jim. I think the best way to have our city council elections is, is to give these folks four-year terms, to have some combination of staggering. My preference would be mayor and at-large council members run one year, two years later the district people run, and you have a balance of citywide elections and issues in one year and localized district elections in another year. It would produce the result that you had just spoke to, that you can't, you would avoid the possibility of wholesale turnover. It would also allow council members more time to get accommodated to the job. The experience of a two-year term was out of that two years, you get about somewhere between 11 and 13 months of actually governing. You, you spend three or four months trying to figure out what the job is and who to talk to and who to trust. Then you do a little work, you take six or eight weeks off for a summer break, you do a little more work, then you take off for holiday, and when you come back in January, February, you get a month or two, and then you're into an election. It, this two-year term for a city like Raleigh is just not long enough, so I completely agree with you. Some of that the city can do themselves under the city charter, some of it the general assembly may need to help with. The problem is we, we've gone to fussing and fighting with each other so much, I, I think it's going to take the general assembly intervening because we're, we're just not going to agree. There's always this dynamic of, if you like the folks on council, you probably favor a four-year term. If you don't like them, you want them out as soon as possible, and, and it's impossible to overcome it when roughly 40% of the people are on both sides and 20% in the middle and 20% in the middle shrugging because they don't know what the right answer is.
Got time for one more question. Judge Griffin?
Hey, Patrick, thanks for being here. One of the big things I'm concerned about with local government is public safety. And I think from my take on it, we're way down on police officers and participation and applicants. What, what, if anything, has the council done to address that? My, my follow-up to that is, did the council tell police officers not to enforce marijuana laws downtown? Because I can walk around the courthouse and it's just, it's everywhere. I, I don't know if this is, I don't know what that's all about. Anyway.
You know, I've noticed that too, particularly when I'm out riding my bike, you, you smell it everywhere. I've always believed, I, I think there's a little bit of a, a resource allocation decision to be kind to the management and the police chief. That, you know, the public consumption of marijuana is a crime that really doesn't cause a whole lot of harm to the community. On the bigger question of public safety, we wandered about quite a bit, fussed a lot and ended up just about where we started on public safety. We did not defund the police. I was pleased to see that. We also did not expand the number of officers in the city. And there was, there was a reasonable justification not to, namely, we could have created the positions and put the funding in the budget to do it. The management was certain that we would not recruit enough people to fill the positions. So do you, do you take the hits for raising taxes and, you know, for those members who, who felt pressure from anti-police forces, you know, do you, do you put a tough vote in front of them that would not have a practical result when you can't recruit enough officers? We, we couldn't recruit enough officers to fill the vacant positions we have today. So the question is, you know, what, what practical effect does creating more positions have on public safety? So, but that said, we did a significant raise for police and firefighters and our emergency communications center. That should help. There's some other things going on inside the department. We have a new chief who came up from Charlotte. She's incredibly talented, dynamic woman, and she is just working her tail off, getting out in the community, seeing people and talking to folks and spreading the message. She's also being more flexible with the officers. The ones that have tattoos below their elbows will be able to wear short sleeves in the summertime. There will be more cars for folks to take home, which is a nice thing for officers to be able to do. For those that live in Raleigh, it also tends to show a presence that the police are, are neighbors and in the community. We also gave them some significant new resources and tools. We realized after the riot, riots in downtown that they didn't have the things that they needed. So after all that wandering and fussing and fighting, you know, we've done all right by the city police. We're in a very difficult environment in terms of salary and benefits for police. The dynamic for a mid-career officer is they can make about as much money here as they can in Apex or Fuquay or Wake Forest, and it's a much easier job in those smaller towns.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Let's give a big round of applause to our own member, Patrick Buffke. Let me remind you, next week is Good Friday, no meeting, but we'll meet the week after that. Look forward to seeing you then. Have a good weekend.